It's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting order. We got a roll, please Cindy.
Operly.
Here.
Barton.
Here.
Betteridge.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Shook.
Here.
Spar.
Here.
And Warham.
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
Okay, if everybody's had a chance to look at last month's minutes, there's no amendments, so here are motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of February 23 be approved as presented.
Barton.
Yes.
Betteridge.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Shook.
Yes.
Spar.
I was absent. I'm abstaining.
Warham.
Yes.
And Operly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before we start tonight, we're gonna have counsel read a short little...
Thank you. A brief introduction of what tonight's public hearing is about. A public hearing is being held tonight pursuant to published notice. Any person wishing to address the zoning board will be afforded an opportunity to do so. They would be sworn in by our court reporter and would give their testimony under oath or affirmation. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the zoning board will make its determination. Four yes votes are required in order to obtain the approval of the zoning board. Clarification is in order regarding what the purpose is of this public hearing. The public hearing is for the zoning board to hear testimony regarding whether the proposed variance meets the required legal standard for variance to be issued. The public hearing is not intended and does not give consideration to whether a particular project is or is not a good idea, whether it is a good or a bad thing for someone to spend money on, not a relevant consideration of this board. The purpose of the variance is again to consider the whether a proposed variance meets certain legal standards. And those standards include whether a particular hardship exists, considering unique attributes of the property, whether the proposed variance is purely for economic gain, whether there are any practical difficulties that are solely at the cause of the applicant, whether the variance would be detrimental or injurious to other property in the area, and whether the variance would impair adequate light or air to adjacent properties, cause traffic problems, impair property values, or endanger the public safety. The testimony offered should be limited to those relevant factors I've explained. We have rules of order in place that govern the conduct of tonight's public hearing. One of those rules of order is that Chairman Warham is the chair of the meeting, and no one should speak until they're recognized to do so by the chair. We'd ask anybody who's going to speak to approach the podium after recognized by the chair and after being sworn by our court reporter and give their testimony from the podium. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spanger wants a little brief statement before we start.
Just as some background as to what we're doing here right now, as you may know, the Zoning Board of Appeals acted on most of this case in January. What happened was, we always send out a notice to everybody that owns property within 250-foot radius of the subject property. We thought we had done that. Two weeks ago this past Friday, give or take a day, I got a phone call from someone whose daughter lives on K Street, and she said, asked if a notice had been sent out, and I go, "Yeah, it has." And she goes, "Well, do you know if you sent a notice to such and such an address?" Well, I pulled the file out and looked, and that address wasn't there. And then a panic set in. I thought, "Oh, boy." And then I got to looking at the list, and I thought, and there were probably 50-some names on that list at the time. I thought, "We didn't get everybody notified." So, within a couple of minutes of that transpiring, I called Bruce Brown, who was gonna be speaking later on behalf of the school, and said, "Bruce, somehow this slipped through the cracks, and it's not anybody's fault but my own, but so we need to republish this meeting and hold this public hearing again." And he says, "Well, we need to come back for another variance on the height of their band director tower." That wasn't all that comforting to me because still, I didn't, somehow, I missed it. I don't know how it happened, but it did. So, that's kinda why we're gonna hear this case again, so we're kinda starting from scratch, but that's a little background for you.
Appreciate that. Okay, we'll start off with our first case and only case tonight. Number 15-04, Morton Community Unit School District 709 is requesting a variance for lighting, bleachers, and band director platform, and a press box at 350 North Illinois Avenue, Zoned R1. One is for stadium lights for a height of 80 feet, home side bleachers and press box of height of 37 feet, visitor's side bleachers, height of 25 feet, and a band director platform, height of 35 feet 6 inches, and the press box for the actual number of accessory structures on a property. Bruce, you wanna stand up and be sworn in, and you can give a brief statement? Cindy, we don't have the...
Do you sound or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Good evening. Bruce Brown with Farnsworth Group. We are the architects working on this project, and as stated, we were here back in January and had brought forth the bleachers, the press box, and the lighting. At the time we did that, we did not bring you the band tower, in that we weren't sure that was in the project when we had made this middle back in December. Since that time, the budget has allowed that the band tower will be included. If you've seen the band director and how he currently gets up in the air and tries to stay in the air, this is a welcome change for him, a much more safer way to do that. The band tower exceeds ordinance by 6 inches when you put the railing, so it's at 35 feet 6 inches above grade. It's on the plans that we've distributed. Everything else that we've discussed, as far as the press box, the lights, all the lighting, remains the same as we have done before. There have been no changes to that. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have regarding those.
Just for the K Street people, on the tennis courts, I don't think we have a current, if anybody's had a chance to look at that plan that's running through, but the tennis courts now are gonna be on the K Street side. We're already talking about the lighting. Lighting's gonna be, no spillage to the street side.
No, the lighting actually is improved because the higher we go, the better, the lighting, more control we have, and the same with the 80-foot lights. By that height now, we're pointing down as opposed to pointing out. So, if we were at a 20-foot height, those lights would be turned up, pointing at other things we don't want. In addition, we're adding cutoff shields in those fixtures, so once you pass the pole going behind it, those foot candles drop dramatically behind it. So, we have much better control of the lights that way and that type of work.
I don't have any questions for you. I don't, does anybody else have? Bruce, if you just wanna step back, and I'll just open this thing up for the public, for some public comments. Who wants to be the first one in the public to make a comment this case?
Hello, my name is Christopher Ferris.
You wanna step in our link and swear in?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you sound swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
May I approach your table to hand out some things I brought with me?
Could you just state your name and address again?
Okay, Christopher Ferris, 309 North Illinois Avenue.
Yeah, you can pass out.
Okay, I just did some printouts, and you probably have something similar to this somewhere in your documents, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what we're talking about here in regards to the neighborhood around the high school where I do reside.
Do you need one third? You don't have another? Defer to those people.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Thank you. So, I, as I stated before, live at 309 North Illinois Avenue. Would you like some time to look at that before I continue?
No, go ahead. I just have a few questions, Chairman. Where's your house set in relationship to the paper that you just gave us?
Would you like me to show you on this?
Sure.
This is Monroe Street, I do believe, and my neighbors and my house. Any other questions?
No.
As I said, I live at 309 North Illinois Avenue, and I just pointed that out on the map there. I've been a neighbor of the high school for on and off over 30 years because I actually grew up in that house and bought it from my parents some years later after I moved out and moved back to Morton. The high school and District 79 is, for the most part, been a good neighbor all these years that I've lived there, and we actually enjoy the activity to some extent. However, as you all know, there, Illinois Street is kind of a speedway, and, you know, that's not a big deal, but this really became a concern to me when I understood that there was going to be a change in the location of the tennis facility. And just for sake of clarification, I spoke to Roger about this, but is there also a variance needed for lights for the tennis facility?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, they're 40-foot, is that correct? Okay. What is the zoning code on the lights?
35-foot.
35, okay. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't hear anybody mention it. Well, I'm here to argue against the approval of variances because of my concerns, and I'm gonna get into them now. First of all, I was doing a little reading on the municipal codes site in the last few weeks, and I think this is somewhat a repetition of counsel over here regarding the Title 10 zoning code. It says, "The purpose of this title is adopted for the following purpose: lessening or avoiding congestion in public streets, securing adequate light, pure air, and safety from fire and other dangers, promoting the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and welfare." And the intent is to these ends, this title is intended to establish certain standards and objectives by, and then I didn't, I'm not gonna read all, I'm just a couple that I feel are relevant to this particular case. Regulating and limiting the intensity and use of lot areas and the area of open spaces within and surrounding buildings, prohibiting prohibited uses, buildings or structures incompatible with the district in which located, or eliminating gradually existing uses, buildings, or structures incompatible with the district in which located. Now, I know that there is a somewhat of a preamble, more so than usual, based on my viewing of the zoning board meetings online. I think that might have been related to my letter I wrote in to a few local media publications. So, I just wanna assuage any concerns that I'm not here tonight to talk about my concerns over the actions of Morton School District 709 and moving too quickly on any project, on this project or a new high school. That really doesn't play any factor in my concerns about the use of the property at 350 North Illinois Avenue. If anybody here is in the audience because they thought I was gonna speak about that, we're gonna be having a meeting in the small room at 7 o'clock after, so you can come in there, and we'll talk about that. I am here tonight, however, to talk about the purpose and intent of the zoning code as it relates to the proposed variance requests. And everybody here in the audience heard what those are, and we added the tennis court lights. Morton School District 709 is asking to move forward on variances for this property, but I think before you do that, as the Zoning Board of Appeals, you need to consider some important questions and make sure that you all have them answered, each individually and collectively. 709 is asking to place a lighted eight-court tennis facility on the Morton High School property before they can answer, in my opinion, what the impact is gonna be on the neighborhood surrounding this facility. Can I step back up to this map here real quick?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Since it's not on this diagram, I wanted to kinda give the audience and the Zoning Board of Appeals my perception of where it's gonna be in general. It looks like it's gonna be about in this area here. Would you say that's correct?
Yeah, general consensus.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. I, as I said, have some questions that I'd like to pose to you and have you consider. Will this tennis facility be a joint Morton 709 Park District facility? Now, I know that might not necessarily seem like it's a concern to you, but I think it's relevant because it's going to determine the use of this facility from here on out. Now, I have asked from the Park District and from the School District if this is the case, if they would be using it in that manner, and they weren't able to give me a strong answer. They just said that they were in discussions on that topic. And related to that question is, will this tennis facility host tournaments and other such events? If that is the case, my concern is that K Street and the surrounding areas also, including my street, are gonna be impacted by traffic and congestion, which is one of the things that I pointed out earlier, and the intent of the zoning board, or the zoning code, that is. What days and hours will this tennis facility be in operation? This is also an important question, I think, needs to be answered before you can give your approval. What will be the light spillage impacts on the neighborhood surrounding the high school? We were told earlier that this would not be a problem based upon the height of the tower. That's not enough information for me. I would like to hear more information. If we're going to promote public comfort and welfare for the neighbors surrounding this facility, I believe we need to know what that means. I'm not an expert in light or anything like that, but I do know that on Friday nights at the football game, the whole neighborhood has an ambient glow, which I'm not complaining about. That's a few nights a year for two or three hours. That's not a big deal to me. I have another question as it relates to what your approval would be. Will there be access to tennis facility from K Street? Again, if that is the case, if people will be parking and coming and going from K Street, which I haven't been able to get a clear answer on from anybody, this, I believe, especially if there are tournaments and other events held there, will lead to more traffic and congestion for the surrounding neighborhoods. If there will be parking on K Street, will there be a sidewalk for pedestrians to walk on? If we're gonna have a lot of traffic in that neighborhood, there are no sidewalks. Has there been a traffic study undertaken to show the impacts of this tennis facility on the streets surrounding Morton High School? And when I say streets, I think we need to look at Illinois, K Street, Monroe, Missouri, and perhaps even Jackson, perhaps more. I'm almost finished, so bear with me. I believe that the Zoning Board of Appeals must be able to answer all the questions that I just posed tonight in order to be in accordance with the purpose and intent of the Village Code, as I understand it and I read earlier. And I ask that each of you on the Zoning Board of Appeals, please consider these questions and the implications for the Morton High School neighborhood before voting on the items before you. Thank you.
My comment on the usage is we're getting rid of two baseball fields on that, that side, replacing with tennis courts that are actually on the other side. So, I don't see that there's a big issue on K Street parking as far as, you know, we're actually gonna access this thing through the parking lot of the high school if there'll be a big sidewalk, you know, going to it.
Are you speaking to me, sir, tonight?
I'll speak to you all you want, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm speaking to everybody.
Well, my understanding is that there most likely will be access. The baseball field is no longer in use by the high school. They have a new varsity field, is my understanding, at a different location. And I don't believe there were ever any lighted events at that field. Is that correct?
No, it never had any lights.
Okay. So, I do think it is a change in use, in my opinion.
Here's what I see. I see that you've brought up some legitimate concerns, but I think they could be addressed. And I'm the same as you. I don't have an engineering degree. I'm not a lighting specialist or an architect. So, I guess I would have a question, and I apologize. Sir, your name was?
Bruce.
Bruce, I know you had indicated that the lighting will actually be better than what it currently is now. And I would agree with any people that are living over there as far as the residents, that they have concerns on the lighting. I think that's a legitimate concern. Could you guarantee that there wouldn't be spillage onto their properties with the way that the lighting's been done as far as the height?
I think their spillage will be less than what they've been having currently. If the village wants us, we do calculations that show foot candles, you know, theoretically based on the fixtures that are used. We can submit those, so you can see the math, how it goes down dramatically after the pole. If we need to submit those, we can submit those, so we have them on file. Will you, will you not see any light? No, you're gonna see light, but by...
I'm saying it's not gonna spill over onto their properties or...
I mean, the long and the short of it is, we could've designed a system that's a little cheaper and gone lower and not have to variance the light, but the spillage from that would be greater. So, really, the better answer here was to go a little bit higher, so we have more control of that light, so it doesn't spill as badly around it.
And those are calculations that you've already done to date then, or...
Yeah, we've done, I mean, we do that because we need to know when we design those courts, how many, how many poles we have to put in to make, to give the basic lighting requirements that are needed.
Okay.
That's also not to say that after you've built that, we've, we've been part of projects like this before. If there's one particular fixture that is causing a problem...
Can be adjusted.
Can be adjusted. And there's been plenty of projects over the years where we've asked the electrical contractor, you know, when we're finishing a project up, we flip them on, we kinda get a feel for what they're doing. If there's one that's really causing a problem, we'll send them up there to adjust it.
Sure. And I know it's been brought before the board in like auto dealerships, parking lots, spillage and concerns, and I feel that that's a legitimate concern. The parking was the next question. I think that's all I have then for you.
Thank you.
The, the parking, I guess, the only question I would have on that, and I apologize for not knowing, but are there signs over there right now that say that you cannot park on that side of the street or at a certain time or no?
I think it's used all day for student parking.
Okay, all right. And again, as far as the neighbors' concerns about people just pulling up and going and playing tennis, I could see that as a concern. I mean, it's, I can't say that I'd wanna have to have that either. Could we, to alleviate that problem, could there be signs put up there that can't park from a certain time to alleviate that problem? Is that a possibility?
That would be a legislative decision of the Village Board.
Okay.
As the, excuse me, as the Zoning Board of Appeals, you can require an applicant to do things as a condition of the award of the variance. What you're asking for is a little bit differently, which is asking for the Village Board to make a legislative change as to whether parking is permissible or when permissible on that side of the road. You could certainly pass that request onto the Village Board for consideration in their ultimate final action based on your recommendation.
Okay.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak tonight? As far as...
I would like to say something regarding what Mr. Ferris said.
Okay.
The sidewalks, I understand that it seems to me that that would be a danger. I could see that as being a problem, that those homes are small, they might have small children, you know, starter homes. And I am to assume that wasn't part of the plan or the plan that we're voting on, correct?
No, no, it isn't.
I mean, I think that we should consider that being in addition, or a, you said that the attorney, you said we can...
But isn't sidewalks the responsibility of the Village in Morton, not the school district? I mean, if there were to be sidewalks put on K Street, that wouldn't be a school district issue, which means we shouldn't be able to consider that in this variance because the school district's the one requesting the variance.
What is easement there, Roger, as far as on that side?
That fence may be close.
Seven feet?
There's not a whole lot of room there.
So, that does fall on the Village as far as...
And there's some discussion. I don't know exactly where that's right now. I don't know if Bruce knows anything.
So, as far as we're acting on tonight, that's, well, Bruce, would you like to comment on that?
I was just gonna suggest that I think the sidewalks are... I'm a, I'm a resident of Morton as well, so I'm as concerned as a designer as I am an owner. The Village is working with the district to look at sidewalks. So, I don't know that there's been a resolution to that yet, but they are certainly aware of it, and I think everybody agrees that something will need to be done along those respects.
But we don't know that.
I'm sorry?
But we don't know that.
There's not been a final decision made yet.
Bruce, I had a question. Do you know what times the lights will be on or the latest they would be on for like tennis matches? I know football, they pretty well established what that is.
Right. I don't, I'm not aware that they've come up with a definite schedule. I will tell you that the way we've designed it is they're on timers, so, you know, if there's nobody, we're not just gonna turn them on at 6 o'clock and let them run to whatever hour of the night. If they're not being used, they're not on. If they are being used, they're on a timer system, so they don't just run forever. You'll have to restart them at some point, but I'm not aware of what schedules have been put together yet for that.
Are, are we putting a new fence up? Is there a new fence going up along K Street or are we using existing?
We're, currently, we have the existing fence still in the plan, and I think part of the sidewalk discussion is what is the best way to handle the sidewalk and fencing along K Street.
Right now, I think there's only one entrance off that K Street, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Little turnstile?
Two.
There's two? Okay, there's two.
There's actually a lot of cars. There's three.
The baseball field.
There's one right at the corner.
Okay.
And one by baseball field.
Yeah, there's one there, the curb coming in for the district as well.
Okay, so there's three technically. Does anybody else want, you wanna speak? You'd like to step up in our link and swear in?
Do you sound swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
My name's Greg Patterson. I live at 720 East K Street, so this is, I guess, a rather heavy impact to me due to the fact that they are gonna be putting the tennis courts there. I understand you're gonna wanna have parking coming from the high school. Based on my experiences, you can give all the instructions and whatnot you want, people are gonna park typically at the closest point possible, especially people not from the area. If the courts are actually used for any tournaments and whatnot beyond, currently, the best parking spots at the high school, based on where the courts are at, if you move them to closer to K Street, you're gonna get a lot more traffic through there. With the entrances there, especially if they're keeping the existing fencing, people are gonna use those routes. There's gonna be a lot more foot traffic. People are gonna be in there for liability reasons on the school. I imagine if someone's hit by a car coming to a school event, no sidewalks, that's something the school should consider. Also increased vehicle traffic, by all means. We have the high school traffic currently, beginning of the day, end of the day, occasionally with an event, but overall, those fields aren't, aren't really heavily used. If you're building a brand-new facility, I imagine the first thing people wanna do is start having tournaments. You're gonna greatly increase the traffic through there. K Street is not set up one bit to have heavy traffic. It's just not feasible. Beyond the high schoolers, you know, trickling in in the morning and trickling out, you're talking about anything beyond that, you're really gonna congest things. And, and there's no sidewalk home side, there's no sidewalk on the school side. School side's the part where they need it more than anything, but there's, there's a, based on my experience as a police officer, I think there is a concern for the pedestrian traffic there. You're setting something up for a lawsuit, as well as increasing the traffic greatly beyond what it is.
As far as the sidewalk, I mean, I, I can see everybody's concerned about, but I don't know if that's our call. You know, I don't think we can make the call on an easement-type piece of property.
Can we ask, though, that they have some kind of agreement so that somebody's going to take care of it before they move forward?
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, that...
You can place conditions on the applicant. You can't place conditions on the Village Board. The conclusion as to whose cost responsibility that is, is a bit of an interesting discussion as to whether that's a school district project cost or a Village project cost. Ordinarily, in subdivision development, infrastructure is a developer cost. This isn't subdivision development, so this is a little bit of a different question. So, I guess the interpretive question is whether doing so, you're conditioning the applicant or you're conditioning the Village. You could also, if you so desired to have resolution to that issue, you could table further consideration of this and to a subsequent meeting, since it sounds like there's some discussions in place, so...
You're saying we could put a condition on it?
You could put a condition on it that... it. I think there's an argument to be made that that's not a school district obligation, so you're kind of conditioning variance on further village board action to approve the expenditure of that cost. So it's, I think if you put the condition in place, you're at least requiring further discussion between the village and the school, but it may be something that makes its way back to you.
Or maybe that this...
That'd be fine, I mean that.
Yeah.
If the village decides it doesn't want to expend the money for it, and the school district's conclusion is that's village requirement, you know, it may be something that finds its way back to you.
Or maybe there's some other solution, but there seems to be need for more discussion. Because if we vote this in tonight, there still could be other issues that are a problem that we're allowing to happen, and then it's too late to resolve it.
I don't know. You have a specific example? I mean, if we go for the light, if we have the sidewalk for the safety issue, but the rest of it, they could, if they want a variance, they could actually get started. If you're gonna go another month, it's gonna prolong their, you know, getting their bids back.
I understand that it would prolong it, but on the other hand, a little bit longer, if it's going to keep other things that will be future problems from happening, I don't think a little, another month would matter.
One point for your consideration as you see it is, the request you're acting on is the height for the stadium lights, the height for the lights for the tennis complex, the height for the home side bleachers, the height for the visitor bleachers, and the number of accessory structures. Without your permission at all, they can construct tennis courts where they plan to. They could reduce the lights to 35 feet. So with or without your approval, they have the ability to do nearly everything they've planned, that just might require minor site modifications.
Bruce?
I'd just like to offer that I, we also share the concern about the sidewalks, and nobody is brushing that under the rug here. It's just a matter, we haven't had the time to sit down with the village and the district and come to what is the right way to put sidewalks in on that side.
I guess that's kind of putting the cart before the horse. That should've been done first before you came for the variance.
My preference would be that we not try to muddy this decision up with a lot of extracurricular stuff. I mean, we're here about a height issue, and he's already explained that the higher lighting poles, but that's not...
Yeah, but I think as he read it, safety concerns were part of it.
There's nobody here that's not concerned about safety, okay? Currently, we have tennis courts that are literally feet away from a state highway that's got semis rolling up and down that highway all day long. In the summertime, the Park District uses that facility. There's kids playing there while their older brothers and sisters are at tennis or whatever, and it's a dangerous situation. The school district has recognized that, and it looks to me like they're making steps to correct that safety issue. There's also safety issues on the football field bleachers, et cetera, et cetera. That's why they need a variance to put in new bleachers for the height of that. The school district has recognized that as an issue of safety, and they're addressing that issue.
I appreciate that.
You know, I mean, I think we, to me, the safety concerns along Route 150 are far greater than any kind of traffic that might be on K Street. And also, when we talk about parking for the event on K Street, there's a finite number of parking spaces on K Street right now. It doesn't matter, you could have 300 people come to a tennis tournament, but that number of cars is all that's ever gonna be there. Those parking spots are filled every single day with student parking. So the parking issue is not gonna be any different at all than what it is every single day.
That's only your school that, where it's the same amount of cars and whatnot. When you start funneling traffic for other areas, you're talking about filling the traffic because it's only restricted parking for certain times of day on one side of the street. You're talking about flooding more traffic for one area and just pushing into another area altogether.
Right. That may happen on days of a tournament. You know, we'd have no idea how many tournaments are gonna be played there. We don't know that yet.
Well, if it's a larger facility, there's a good chance. I don't know, do you, could, do they generate money for tournaments?
I guess there's...
You know, I mean, there's a lot of these ifs and what-ifs and what could-be's, and we could all come up with scenarios here that, on either side of the coin, everybody can come up with a scenario that would kind of support whatever side of the issue somebody's on.
I think the point is...
But the bottom line is, we're here to approve something, the height of the bleachers and the height of the light poles. That's what we're here to do.
I think that what they're upset about, though, is that there are all these other little issues that it is kind of the cart before the horse, and if, if those should have been resolved before they brought this variance, so that there aren't the muddy waters.
Right. But that's an issue between the public and the school board, not the zoning board of appeals.
Right, I agree.
I would have to concur, I think, and I hope that everybody out there can appreciate the position that we're in. We understand your concerns, and I think you guys do have legitimate concerns, but the board here is a body. That's not for us to decide. What is for us to decide is what's in front of us, is the lighting issue. And I addressed that with that gentleman and said, you know, I would not want lighting spilling onto me, and if they can adjust it, correct it, then I would say that I personally don't have a problem. If I felt that the lights coming in through my bedroom window couldn't sleep, then I wouldn't like it. So I would agree with people's concerns there. But I hope that you can understand and respect us as a board. We see your concerns, but unfortunately, that's not for us to decide. And I don't want to make my decision contingent upon other issues, although I do think they're legitimate concerns, but I don't want to, I don't want to make a decision based on something that's been brought forward to us as a board. That's how I personally feel about it. But I do think you do have legitimate concerns, but I think they, there's other places to address those concerns than here, because that's not really what this board is made up for.
Would anyone else like, Chris?
I'd like to speak to what you just said, sir. Going back to what I spoke on earlier, I actually do believe that is what your board is for, based upon my reading of the purpose and intent. Because, as I said before, your purpose is to lessen and avoid congestion on public streets and to promote the public safety and welfare. And your intent is to regulate and limit the intensity and use of lot areas and the areas of open spaces within surrounding buildings, prohibiting proposed uses, buildings or structures incompatible with the district in which they're located. To me, this tennis facility is incompatible with the R1 district, even though I know there is a special situation for schools. So I do believe it is up to you, and I do believe that it is not compatible.
The section he just read sounds to me, and I don't have your code memorized, so he gave you citations before. It sounds like the preamble to your zoning regulation saying why you have zoning regulations. The purpose of this particular procedure, the public hearing and your vote on these requested variances, is to determine whether or not you feel the request for approval of the increased height for the lights, increased height for the bleachers, and for the band director platform and the press box, does or does not meet with your approval based on the requirement set forth in your code and state law. And the question of whether a tennis complex should or should not be situated on the south side of the school's lot is not part of that, part of what's been asked for you to consider.
Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is Jim Stefan, and I live at 608 Pier Street, but I own the property right across from the property right here, if I could approach you.
Yep.
I own this property right here. There's a gate right here for the existing, for the baseball fields. And I believe there's a gate right here in the corner, and there's some up here with a turnstile by the softball field. I'm, Mr. Brown talked about the lighting on the tennis courts versus the football field. I think you said 80-foot, but is that the football field?
Yep.
And 40-foot is the tennis courts? So some of the advantage of the higher lights throw over to football field is welcome, because we get bleed over now, yes. But if it's only 40-foot at the tennis courts, that's a lot closer, and I don't know what the effect will be there. It sounds like that's a negative. How many's on there?
I think it's gonna be like the soccer fields. Anybody's gone out and looked at the new soccer fields we put in? We've done that for spillage, and they are, I mean, you, it's from the poles, there's not a whole lot of lighting. In fact, I think sometimes it needs to be, we needed more spillage out, because it is dark. I mean, you get past that, and it's...
Well, I would be concerned about that. And I, again, but I'm gonna say, six years ago, and I can easily be corrected on that, but they put new paving on K Street there. At that time, the city asked us if we wanted to put a sidewalk in. And of course, most homeowners would say we don't want to because of the cost, but the other, the thing that happens is, the students park on the other side of the road, and if they were to walk across the street to the sidewalk, they'd have to cross the street all the time. And so the sidewalk should've been on the high school side, because that's where the traffic's at. And of course, what they do now is they walk down the middle of the street, which, again, is a safety issue to my opinion. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, it takes two people to play a game of tennis. Maybe if it's doubles, it takes four, and that's like anywhere from 16 to 32 cars possibly, which would totally fill that street up till 10 o'clock at night with lights on. And I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, it'll be open to the public. Does anybody know that?
I believe so.
Yeah, I believe so.
So if it's open to the public, it's gonna get used.
Yeah. Well, I think it's gonna be just like it is now. If you drive by, it's not used, I mean...
But the lights are on an awful lot now.
Yeah.
Which we get the spill over from them too, a little bit, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, if you have eight courts there, anywhere from 16 to 32 players, you're gonna have anywhere from 10 to 30-some cars there. And right now, there's, the parking on the residence side is limited, and correct me exactly what the hours are on that. Is it eight to four? Eight to four, you can't park on that side at all. So if I have tenants that want to park on that side, they can't, and they can't park on the other side, because it's already full. So parking is a safety issue there, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But I would just question whether it makes sense that, you know, I don't want higher lights, don't get me wrong, but I'd be certainly concerned about the spillage of lights.
I think they're, these are pretty good. I mean, they're, they already said they're gonna address it if there's, you know, if it's, if you're up high, you're shooting just straight down. I don't think we're gonna get the, like, right in your front window.
Yeah. And that's exactly what we get. I mean, it's right in, there's picture windows, and you can see where we're situated there. It would definitely be lights in the window.
Okay. Appreciate it, Jim.
I have a question for Mr. Brown. Looking at the diagram here, it looks like the tennis courts are actually somewhat off of K Street towards the football field. Do you not know how many feet this complex is? Because looking at the diagram, I mean, the practice field comes way closer to K Street than what these tennis courts do.
I don't have the exact dimension, but we did, we positioned it as close to the football stadium as possible.
Right, I was gonna say, because the four quads here are already significantly off K Street to start with, so if the lighting is designed to be coming more straight down than sideways...
And maybe to go back to the lighting question, the height of the light is kind of proportional to the amount of area that you're trying to light. A football field being a much larger space, and you're trying to minimize the number of poles, so you gotta go higher to get that lights out the way you want. Tennis, being a smaller footprint, we don't have to go as high, so there's a significant cost difference between a 40-foot pole and an 80-foot pole along the way. And you're correct, the tennis is pushed as close to the stadium as possible.
If, that's the, if, Jim?
If I could, just one more.
Just, could you step the podium just real quick, so we can get that on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna say is that, again, with the baseball diamond there, it was only a daytime use, so there was, you know, nothing going on at night. And with, and there was a lot of traffic during the day when they were playing, but now if you have late-night use, there's gonna be a lot more traffic after dark.
Yeah.
And so, again, I think that's a bit of a concern.
Okay, thank you. If that's the end, is no more questions? Does the board have any more questions?
Do you want to leave the board on the board?
Yeah, we just do it all. I don't know if we want to make that condition on sidewalks. We can throw it in. If it's gonna end up back at us again anyway, what does council recommend?
If, it's up to the board to decide if you want to include that in the motion or not. You can impose conditions, and as I said, it could be one that is a boomerang back to you down the road if you put that condition in place. But it's up to the movement to decide, and if their motion's seconded, whether that order will not be included as a condition in the vote.
If we put the condition on it, does it keep them from going forward?
Until the condition is satisfied, it would.
Yeah, see, I just personally, and I'm speaking openly to everybody, I see their concerns, but what's been brought forward is this. I mean, it's, this is, what we're here to do is to look at what's in front of us, I think. I mean, I don't want to get in, I agree with Bill, and I just don't wanna, I don't want to get involved in that part of it.
Hold the whole project up for when we're dealing with it once you do it?
Right. And I think, I think there's legitimate concerns. I'm not gonna say that, no, it's just, I don't wanna, it's not what's been presented to me.
Yeah.
So, but I do agree with Mary that there are concerns, and they should be looked at, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm looking at what's in front of me. I'm looking at what was presented to me as far as the lighting issue, which I felt that he did a good job, Mr. Brown, as far as given, told us what could be done, and as long as it's not gonna be a lot of light spillage, then I'm happy with that part. I do see your concerns, though. I agree with that. But as a board, I think we're here to look at this. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, I feel that same way. We're gonna probably, the fight for the sidewalks would be a little while. With that, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant case number 15-0410102C as stated earlier.
Second. To clarify, before Cindy calls for the vote, that was a motion without the condition in place.
Yes.
So if board members desire to impose a condition, they can vote no on that action when they're called, and that doesn't preclude a subsequent action if someone were to move and receive a second to approve it with the condition. So that's your, where you are in parliamentary procedure.
Can we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Federich?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shook?
Yes.
Spar?
No.
Warham?
Yes.
Appely?
Epstein.
Ann Barton?
Yes.
Thank you.
The variance has been granted. I appreciate everybody showed up, and I hope everything was cleared up, and I think the school district will work on the sidewalks. They're gonna try to, they're a good neighbor. I think they've always tried to be a good neighbor, so I think they'll address the issues. But thanks for coming. You were a record-setting crowd, too.
Hey now, for a second.
Jernman?
We got Roger?
Oh, yeah.
Roger, if you're ready to...
Hi. No, Roger, you have anything?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. Steven not here. We'll have a mo, we have a motion.
I'll move that with you.
I'll say.
Grant, motion.
And Kevin Jones, second.
We can do it all, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.